Good evening. This is the Commissioner meeting of January 12th, 2022 at 6:00 PM here at the Sussex County Community College Performing Arts Center in Newton, New Jersey. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Terry, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney.
Here.
Commissioner Van Geer will be absent this evening. Director Fasano.
Here.
Commissioner Patillo.
Here.
Commissioner Yardley.
Here.
And Baxter will be absent as well this evening.
Baxter is absent.
Item three on our agenda is a moment of silence and a salute to the flag. If you could please rise and join us in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 239, PL 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email. Such notice being submitted on January 7th, 2022, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: The New Jersey Herald, WSUS Radio, The Star-Ledger, and WNNJ Radio, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute all electronic devices. Item five on our agenda is the approval of our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Yardley moves. Commissioner Patillo seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Item six on our agenda is our proclamation certificates and presentations. We have none. Item seven on our agenda is our public hearings, and we have none. Item eight on our agenda is public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please come up to the microphone and maintain six feet social distance with other attendees. State your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record, and at the end of public comments, I will do my best to address any questions. Are there any? I'm sorry, I need a motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Patillo moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Is there anyone who would like to make any public comments? Seeing none, I need a motion to close the floor for public comment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Patillo moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries, and public comment is closed. Item nine on our agenda is our Commissioner comments, and we'll start to my right with Commissioner Yardley.
I have no comments tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Yardley.
Score.
That's the best report. We'll go to Commissioner Patillo.
Okay.
You're not going to say the same?
No.
Okay.
Oh, boy.
A few things. I'm going to start with vaccinations. The Sussex County Division of Health, in collaboration with Sparta Pharmacy, is offering drive-through COVID-19 vaccinations for Moderna, which is 18 and older, Johnson &amp; Johnson, 18 and older, Pfizer, which is 12-plus, and Pfizer Pediatric, which is 5 to 11 years old, vaccines. Available vaccine options include first, second, and third additional doses and boosters. These clinics are being held at the Sussex County Fairgrounds on the following dates: Thursday, January 13th, from 2:00 to 5:00; Saturday, January 15th, from 9:00 to 12:00; Thursday, January 20th, from 2:00 to 5:00; Saturday, January 22nd, from 9:00 to 12:00; Thursday, January 27th, from 2:00 to 5:00; and Saturday, January 29th, from 9:00 to 12:00 PM. To complete your consent form in advance, just visit the Sussex County website at www.sussex nj.us. The New Jersey Department of Health reports that Sussex County residents have received 182,756 doses of vaccine, 10926 first doses, and 89,380 residents are fully vaccinated. Information regarding the number of third doses and boosters administered is not available at this time. For COVID-19 testing, free-at-home test kits continue to be offered through a program sponsored by the County of Sussex. Visit the Sussex County website, again at www.sussex nj.us, to schedule an at-home test through Vault Medical Services or LabCorp. The Division of Health and Office of Emergency Management are working with Vault Health to open a COVID-19 testing site at the Sussex County Fairgrounds for residents in the near future. That is so important, because right now you can't get your hands on a test. So Sussex County now is working with Vault Health to actually start our own testing site up at the fairgrounds, and just, you know, watch our site for that announcement, because it's coming soon. COVID-19 virus. The most recent New Jersey Department of Health COVID-19 activity level report, as of weekend in January 1st, 2022, indicates the entire state, including our region, is coded red, which indicates a very high activity level. This is consistent with other states across the nation. For the past week, we have been reporting an average of 500-plus cases daily. The COVID reports indicate an increasing number of COVID-19 cases. The county has a total of 30,359 cases, representing 21.7% of our population, and a total of 386 deaths, representing 1.3% of all cases. For hospitalizations, I'm going to read the hospitalizations starting in June, so that you can see the difference as we move forward. In June 2021, there were four. In July 2021, there were four. In August, there were 31. In September, 42. In October, 69. In November, there were 62. In December, there was 124. And now, from January 1st to January 6th, there are 58. 25 outbreaks in the county, one acute care facility, eight long-term care facilities, staff and residents, and 16 schools and daycares. For the variants, according to the most current New Jersey Department of Health variant report, as of the weekend in December 18th, 2021, the New Jersey Department of Health is reporting the Delta variant is estimated to represent 85.5% of all identified variants across the state, while Omicron represents 13.9%. The northern region, which includes Sussex County, indicates almost 20% of the variants are Omicron. For more information about booster shots, including eligibility requirements, vaccinations, testing, or the COVID-19 virus, visit the Sussex County website at www.sussex nj.us or call the Office of Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570, extension 1211. Now, the New Jersey Department of Health Influenza and Respiratory Illness Surveillance Report, weekend in January 8th, 2022, is below. The report highlights influenza activity level is high statewide and in all regions of the state. Emergency department visits and outpatient provider visits associated with influenza-like illness are lower than last week and higher than the same week last year. There have been no influenza-associated confirmed pediatric deaths reported this season. Positive results continue to be reported. Influenza A is at 77.78%, followed by A, which is H3N2, at 20.79%, B at 1.33%, and A of HI, H1N1, is .10%. That's the end of my reports, but right now I would like to just congratulate Ms. Lama Shaddad, who is our epidemiologist, who just received recognition as a 2021 hero from Mikey Sherrill and the Hero Program that our Congress members are offering every year. And I would just like to read that this recognition is because of the difference that Lama has made in the lives of others during the pandemic. And I just want to take you back a little bit when all of this started, and we didn't have an epidemiologist. And I remember trying to go out and find one, and when Lama came on board, we were just so thrilled to have her, and she has just done such an excellent job in cooperation with all of our staff over at the Health Department, and I just want to give them all credit, but actually recognize her. I'd like to read the, oh, that was the, that I just read. Okay, that was the award that was given to her. And it's just nice that she is actually nominated and recognized for all the work that she does so quietly in her little office. So thank you so much, Lama. We're really glad to have you on board. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Patillo. Deputy Director Carney.
I will be brief. I just wanted to go over, I know we don't have anybody in our audience today, as we did last year, so many asking for hybrid meetings. They also, I got calls about video live streaming. I guess there's Board of Eds and some other municipalities which do so. So I had Terry get a quote, get a quote for this. And just to let you all know, I wanted to go over this with you, so you're aware, whether you're in favor or not, at least you have some backing of a decision. Okay? So she secured a quote from AV vendor to attend, set up and break down equipment for 26 meeting dates. The cost was $33,475, or $1,314.04 per meeting. In addition, there is one time.
Now, what was that exactly?
Well, I'll give you a total cost at the end.
But what was that for?
This is for.
Hybrids or?
This is for live stream.
Live stream.
Live stream. And you got to keep in mind, too, we don't, I think we'll be here forever, but, as I said earlier, but we might not be here. So this was for this particular venue. In addition, there is one time $690 Zoom webinar subscription. So total cost to live stream, whether you like it or not, is $34,165. Okay? So it's very.
Does that have a question?
Sure.
So that means they see us live streaming. Do they call in on?
No. No, 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 no. If we wanted to have that option, me in particular, no way.
My other question.
That's, we'll get right back to where we were.
Does this include a camera on the people that come to the podium and talk?
How I thought about this would be just, that's directly at us, so everybody's going to be seen. There's no, there's no one man in the camera, I don't believe, right? That wasn't, oh, there is somebody, so they would be turning.
Yes.
They would be turning.
Yes.
Right. So if you wanted to put a show on, you could.
Well, look, I, I think what was experienced this year with the Zoom meetings and the attacks on boards.
Right.
I don't know the benefit of live streaming, because the data didn't show that we had a large, significant members of the public watching us for the cost, and the people that were, and the camera was on us, and the people, there were people speaking. And I think the public, if we're going to have the focus on us, if you can't see the people that are at the podium, that's one thing. But I need to know the benefit of this, and whether this represents the will of the majority of the county, to spend this money. For what?
Understood.
Okay.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. I do have some numbers here with the viewers, just to throw some numbers at you. There was 110.17 viewers per meeting. This was one, January 2nd of 19 through November 12th of 19, 110.17 viewers. I don't know where you get that 1.7 viewers, but whatever. Per meeting with an average view time of 1.5 minutes. So, again, agree with you. This was just brought to our attention so many times. Our crowd is not here that was asking for this, but I'm not going to wait for them, because maybe they'll never show up. It's a lot of money. It's a lot of money for, again, the few viewers that are going to be watching. They do a great.
The 100 is a lot. Times that I was, there were like nine people on it.
Well, this is altogether. This is from, from.
Oh, from the whole span?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. There was no one, and most of the people that were watching were our people, just to get information.
You're looking about 10.01.
Right, there was nobody watching.
With that 0.17.
And you had, what'd you say, one minute of time?
1.5 minutes.
Yeah.
So basically, you're looking, maybe you're seeing who's there, and that's it. Again, a lot of money for something that people aren't using, but again, I wanted, people asked for it, we researched it. Going forward, we have the answer, so. I'm not looking for a yea or a nay.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just trying to give you some facts, that's all.
Thank you.
Moving on, this, I was just at the chiropractor, I go to Kynico Health and Wellness in Sandiston, and they're doing COVID testing there, sanctioned by the state. And you can go, I wish I had their website, a little unprepared, but you can go on their Facebook page and make an appointment and get tested over there.
How long was the wait, did I say?
They're booked.
Yeah.
They're booked, but they started this last Friday. But it's nice, so I will actually, I'll put that on my Facebook page tonight, and if you guys want to share that as well.
Thank you.
Right off a 206, literally right off a 206. Do, 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 do. I want to thank the DPW, I think they did a great job, right? Their fleet garage and the DPW, keeping our roads clean, as always. And just one more thing on a personal note, in state government here, our governor is just, he's just not a leader. How you don't listen to your elected officials is beyond me. You know, sometimes I don't always agree with all you guys, nor do you always agree with me, but we do what's right for the people, because that's what we're supposed to do, and listen to our other elected officials, and our governor just does not do that.
He's out there by himself.
It is very disturbing to me. I read this, and I'm just going to read it to you, and I'll end my comments, but leadership is not about you. It's about investing in the growth of others. And I don't see that our governor does that whatsoever. It's about him. It's about power. I guess when you have $50 million, only thing you can grasp for is power. So that ends my comments.
If I could just add that the longer the, the longer that the emergency, he maintains emergency, the more he can rely on the fact that he doesn't have to give us the information we're asking for.
That's true.
So do we really need it, or is it one of those things where he's going to continue to do this until next year?
Well, thank you, Deputy Director Carney, and just to add on to your streaming report, I did just want to remind those in the public that the County Commissioner Board not only posts its minutes, its meeting minutes, but also its meeting audio the next day, which is available right on our website, right on our Commissioner page. My report is a little briefer than last week, but I did just have a few updates, and I'll start by saying I'm proud tonight to share that the Sussex County Division of Health has worked collaboratively with the New Jersey Department of Health and Woodland Behavioral and Nursing Center in Andover, New Jersey, to secure the assistance from the New Jersey National Guard to supplement staffing at the facility for the safety and care of all residents. The National Guard began work at Woodland Behavioral Nursing Center, which is formerly Andover SubQ2, on Monday morning, January 10th. It is anticipated that they will remain at this facility for at least 10 days, and the big takeaway over these last few days have been all sides coming together for the common good, the State Department of Health, the County Division of Health, and the facility itself. The Commissioners commend all who were involved in these efforts, and we remain committed to taking every necessary step to ensure Sussex County residents are getting the best care possible. Sussex County Division of Health continues to monitor and report on COVID throughout the entire county, including in long-term care facilities throughout Sussex County, and will continue to work collaboratively with the entity responsible for the oversight and licensing of these facilities, and that is the New Jersey Department of Health. As Commissioner Patillo mentioned, Sussex County has also been working with the New Jersey Department of Health to amplify Sussex County's testing availability and to set up a state-sponsored testing location at the Sussex County Fairgrounds through the services of our mutual testing partner, Vault Health. The New Jersey Department of Health has agreed to cover the cost of those services, and our emergency preparedness team, in cooperation with the County's Office of Emergency Management, has put together the logistical requirements of setting up this site at the fairgrounds, and conversations have been ongoing, including today still, to work out these details. It is anticipated that this site will be able to provide PCR saliva tests and rapid antigen tests, both through pre-scheduled and walk-up or drive-through options at the fairgrounds. As Sylvia mentioned, additional information will be provided as soon as it becomes available, and I do expect that to be soon, and I did just want to make clear that this is a top priority for Sussex County right now. This collaboration with the New Jersey Department of Health and Vault Health reflects the next step in our response to COVID-19, with this effort aimed at ensuring testing, vaccines, and boosters are available to any resident who would like it. As always, for the latest COVID updates in Sussex County, please be sure to visit sussex nj.us/covid19. And finally, I just wanted to mention that I am in the process of determining the respective liaison assignments for each Commissioner. I hope to have that finalized by our next meeting, but this is a strong team, and I'm really honored to be a part of it, really excited for the work that's ahead of us this year, and all that we can accomplish together. So that concludes my report for this evening. We'll move on to item number 11 on our agenda, I'm sorry, 10 on our agenda, which is the approval of consent agenda. There is none. Item 11 on our agenda is the approval of minutes, and we'll separate this out. We'll first do the approval of our regular minutes and our executive session minutes from our meeting of December 21st, 2021. Were you here for that?
No, I wasn't.
Okay, so then let's do all three. Let's do the approval of minutes for our regular and executive session for December 21st, 2021, and our reorganization meeting on January 5th. So is there a motion to approve the minutes for those three items?
Still move.
Commissioner Carney moves, and Commissioner Yardley seconds.
I wasn't here for the first meeting, so.
Okay.
In December.
All right, then would you just want to abstain from that in your vote?
I'll abstain, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? Can you call the roll for this one, Terry?
Okay. Director Fasano?
Yes to all three.
Commissioner Patillo?
Abstain, all three.
Commissioner Yardley?
I have to abstain.
Only yes to the one, right?
Only on the one?
I'll abstain on the first one, yes. The other two, I'll.
I apologize, I'd like to have known.
That's fine.
And then Commissioner Carney.
Yes to all three.
Was Dawn here on the first, the 21st?
Yes.
You don't have to hold that one, because you have enough votes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so for the record, our meeting minutes from January 5th have been approved.
Eligible people here eligible to vote.
I wasn't sure. No.
Yeah, there's not even enough, right? Because.
Okay.
Don would be the quorum.
Yeah.
All right, so for our regular meeting and our executive session on December 21st, we can simply put that on our next agenda.
Stuff to put a note, yeah, that you gotta, if you put it online.
Can you phone on if you weren't here?
What's that?
Can you vote to pass the minutes, even if you weren't here?
You guys don't?
I wouldn't.
No?
It's not a big deal.
You wouldn't, I mean, you have nothing to, you have nothing to review, Sylvia, since you weren't here, so.
So, hold on.
You weren't here. Sylvia wasn't here.
But I was, December 10th meeting, I wasn't, but this only has the 21st.
So you're good at the 21st?
Yeah, I was here on the 21st.
All right, so Commissioner Yardley's changing his vote.
Yeah, I'm yes.
You're yes.
I'm yes.
Okay, so just to recap now, all three are now approved.
Correct.
Okay? Everybody good with that? All right.
I apologize for when I looked at.
No worries.
The December 10th was.
Item 12 on our agenda is appointments under resignations in which there are none. Item 13 on our agenda is our resolutions. Is there a motion to adopt resolutions A through D?
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Yardley moves. Commissioner Patillo seconds. Terry, can you please call the roll?
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Item passes. We're on to item 14 on our agenda, which is the awards of contract change orders and bids. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders and bids, consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determined that adoption of the set resolutions is in and will further the public interest. Is there a motion to adopt resolutions A and B?
So moved.
Commissioner Patillo moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. Terry, can you please call the roll?
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 15 on our agenda is the payment of the bills. Is there a motion to pay the bills list?
So moved.
Commissioner Patillo moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none. Terry, can you please call the roll?
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Call all of you.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, sorry. My glasses got foggy.
No worries.
No light.
No light. It's foggy.
Item passes. Item 16 on our agenda is the authorization of the personnel agenda of January 12th, 2022. Is there a motion to adopt the personnel agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Yardley moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Patillo seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none. Terry, can you please call the roll?
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 17 on our agenda is our administrative report, and I'll hand it off to our County Administrator, Mr. Greg Poff.
Thank you, Director. I will be brief this evening. We are continuing to develop the 2022 county budget. The Capital Budget Subcommittee met earlier this week to finalize the 2022 capital improvement program. I will be meeting with the CFO at the end of this week to finalize the draft operating budget, and a meeting of the Operating Budget Committee will be scheduled later this month to review the final draft prior to our work session at the beginning of February. From Health and Human Services, the Division of Health convened the monthly mayor's call on Tuesday, January 4th. The county's Division Director, Dr. Lama Shaddad, presented the current status of the COVID-19 pandemic within the county. Also, on January 4th, there was an event organized by Congressman Matt Cartwright of Pennsylvania, promoting the benefits for Pennsylvania and Northwest New Jersey, including travel and tourism, as well as the reduction of traffic on the I-80 corridor for the proposed Amtrak Transit Service. Congresswoman Sherrill spoke about how beneficial this rail service would be, and how the project would serve Sussex County, as there is little public transportation here. Senator Oraho and the county's transportation planner, Tom Drabek, attended, representing Sussex County. And lastly, the Board of Elections, I participated in a meeting earlier this week with the Board of Elections to discuss the Board's planning for upcoming elections. The administration is working with the Board towards the completion of the voting equipment replacement project, and it is anticipated that this project will be completed this year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Poff. Item 18, County Council Report. Anything from Mr. Steinhardt?
Just only one item, the American Rescue Plan Act. The final rule has been adopted, which is now concludes that process. Leftover, the interim rule's been in place since May of last year. Goes into effect April first. We are putting our notes on the final rules that relates to all the information we've given you so far. I had a call earlier today with Director, so that'll be forthcoming, hopefully by the time we get to your next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Steinhardt. Item nineteen on our agenda is Unfinished Business. Do any board members have any unfinished business? Item twenty on our agenda is New Business. Do any board members have any new business?
Yes, I have new business.
Sure, Mr. Yardley.
I would like to know on regards to the COVID reports, if we could get it divided into admissions, and those people that showed up at the hospital and were not admitted. So I think the report, the way it's reflected, it said COVID shows the number of people from the hospital with COVID, but I don't know whether it's seeing who showed up and said, was tested, you have COVID, and were sent home, and who ended up staying. I think, I just would like to know if we could do that. And as things evolve and we find more information, I'll probably ask for some other data.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we make sure that that's noted for me?
Mayors, do you want to know how many people were tested at the hospital and sent home, and how many who were admitted to the hospital?
Right, so, you know, because we get a total number, so I'd like to know, you know, is everyone admitted and staying overnight or have problem, or do we have people going and being sent home with, you know, so we can gauge the seriousness, you know, of the illness.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Yardley. Any other new business? Item twenty-one is our Public Session from the Floor, and this Public Session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and maintain a six-feet social distance with other attendees. When you arrive, please state your name and municipality for the record. When public comments are closed, I will do my best to answer any questions. With that, is there a motion to open the floor for public comment?
Still moved.
Commissioner Patillo moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Floor is now open to the public. Is there anyone wishing to make a comment? Seeing none, I need a motion to close the floor for public comment and return to regular business.
Still moved.
Commissioner Patillo moves. Is there a second? Commissioner Yardley seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Item twenty-two is our Reminders. We'd like to remind you, as always, to please check the county's website at W W W dot Sussex dot N J dot U S for meeting schedules, news updates, reports, and more. Item twenty-three on our agenda is Executive Session. This is a resolution providing for an executive session not open to the public in accordance with provisions of NJSA ten-four-twelve E T S E Q. What does that mean?
Et cetera. Latin version of et cetera.
Never seen that in my life. Ever in my life. Okay, you learned something new. I will give this off to Terry.
Whereas the subject matters about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution, the Board of County Commissioners, as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B, and whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, in accordance with the provision of NJSA ten colon four dash